This is our superintendent's focus group. It is an opportunity for the public to express their concerns and thoughts on this selection for the Pittsburgh Public Schools Superintendent. Let me provide an explanation of the purpose of focus groups. Focus groups are designed to obtain participant input regarding the attributes, experience, and knowledge that the new superintendent should possess. The groups also provide an opportunity for participants to identify immediate tasks which the new superintendent should address. Participants are also encouraged to share future thoughts on this subject as well. Now, I'm going to take this opportunity to introduce the screening committee members, and I will be going in alphabetical order. Kim Cochran, Doctor of Education, Pittsburgh resident. She happens to be the school librarian at Pittsburgh High School. Sally Cragan, Pittsburgh resident and school committee member. Dr. Danette Day, Doctor of Education, Pittsburgh resident, community assistant professor, education department at Pittsburgh State University. Rowan Demange, Administrator of Pupil Personnel. Deborah Jeffries, Pittsburgh resident and staff teacher at Crocker Elementary School since 1987. Jean LaBelle Pierce, Pittsburgh resident, school committee member. Peter Stevens, Pittsburgh resident and school committee member and former school principal. Laurie Stone, Pittsburgh resident. She is also on the staff as a daily sub at Memorial Middle School, and she is a parent of three. Sheila, Sheila, right?
Vadre Vu.
Vadre Vu. Pittsburgh resident, parent, Pittsburgh High School, and, okay. Jonathan Thompson, Principal Administrator, South Street Elementary School. And rounding this out, Hugo Vera, Pittsburgh resident, parent of a Pittsburgh High student. The screening committee responsibilities include reviewing applications, interviewing candidates chosen from the applicant pool, and recommending several candidates to the school committee for further consideration. The screening committee work will require a significant commitment of time and a high degree of confidentiality. I'll take this time to review the screening committee calendar. We're involved in the focus group with stakeholders, parents, students, staff, Pittsburgh residents. That's going on as we speak. At Memorial Middle School Library. Initial screening committee meeting Tuesday, October 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Private screening of candidates by the screening committee Thursday, November 1st from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Private interview of candidates Tuesday, November 13th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Private interview of candidates Tuesday, November 20th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And public interviews of finalists by the school committee December 3rd, 2018, 6:30 p.m. at Memorial Middle School. And then finally, identification of a new superintendent in December 2018, January 2019. Also, for the public that may be here this evening, notification of speaker. There will be speaker sign-in sheets, and note cards will be provided with pens if you have questions that you would like to ask. I suppose we open this up to public comment. Does anyone wish to come forward to the center table, state your name and your address, and you may have the floor? Anyone in the audience? Yes, ma'am? Yes, please.
My name is Christine Smith, 49 Oakland Street in Pittsburgh here. I'm a homeschooling mom. I've been homeschooling for over probably 21 years. I'm on my last two children as far as homeschooling goes. I just wanted to make sure that the homeschooling community is well represented. Any concerns? I'm not sure if there's anybody on the committee that's going to be picking the superintendent, whether there will be anybody that will represent that homeschooling voice. There are policies in the district that affect homeschoolers, and so I just want to make sure that the next superintendent is sensitive to those needs. All right? That's it. Thank you.
Does the group wish to have comments made, or is there any, anything that that would, is that, should that be part of the process this evening? I mean, they may want to respond to...
I would like to ask the question.
Are there current concerns that you have now?
Yeah.
Is there something that's not working well right now? Or is there something that you'd like to have continue that's working really well?
I think it's working fairly well right now. I mean, it's a fairly easy process to go through right now. You know, with change of superintendents, sometimes there's a bumpy road, and sometimes superintendents aren't so friendly to homeschooling. So I just wanted to make sure that the next superintendent would be friendly to homeschooling and abide by the rules in Massachusetts.
Can I ask, what are the numbers in the community? Because I'm not really aware.
I don't know the numbers in the community.
Okay.
I know that, you know, I have, I know there's a few other families that I personally know, but, you know.
And things are working well for the people that you know?
For me, I know that, yeah. I'm not sure about others. I mean, as far as, I've heard no complaints from anybody that I know.
That's good to hear. Okay.
Are there particular policies that you know of that you'd be...
Particularly concerned?
No, I just, you know, there's, sometimes the notice of intent may be a little bit more, more, what is the word? I can't think of the word, but the notice of intent, it, you know, sometimes, you know, as long as, you know, there's the freedom to write your own notice of intent versus having to fill out a form, things like that. You know, I always just write my own letter, and, you know, I basically answer the needs of the notice of intent, but there's just some wording. There's some wording that comes from the Charles Law regarding homeschooling, or it's Charles statute, not law. But there, you know, some wording that sometimes is taken out of context, and the way it's worded sometimes might kind of indicate something a little different than what really the statute says. So I just, you know, that's why I just stay with my own letter and, you know, in my notice of intent to the districts.
Okay.
But not, nothing, no concerns, I just want to make sure that, you know, things continue.
Yeah.
Well, you know, into the future.
If it makes you feel better, in a former district, I was in charge of homeschooling parents.
Oh, very good.
I will keep that in mind as a member of the committee.
Thank you. All right.
It'd be good for us to reach out to some of the homeschoolers, too, because they're eligible to participate in a lot of our activities.
Right, yeah.
I don't know how many that do, but I think there were over 100 homeschoolers in Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't look up those numbers before I came up. Is that it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing? Please, yes.
I have to remember what to say. Sarah Gates, 7 Hazel Street, Pittsburgh, Massachusetts. I'm a mother of two boys at Crocker Elementary, a six-year-old and a nine-year-old. I'm extremely happy with Crocker, so I don't want to say anything negative, but my concerns in choosing a superintendent are that we continue to support the kids on opposite ends of the academic spectrum. I have one child who scores almost perfect scores on everything. My other child can barely read in first grade. My biggest concern and something that I hear from parents at a lot of other schools is I don't want the kids in our district who are intelligent to become just kids who are going to change schools' averages and scores. They need to stay challenged, and I know I've, something that I feel like I've had to follow somewhat over the years. Some teachers have been great and others haven't, but to be honest, I'm pretty concerned about our middle schools as we're going in, so.
Question from the panel? Yes, Jim?
What are some of the concerns you have about the middle schools?
Mostly, I just have not heard fantastic things about any of them. When I give my preference, I've been told, well, why would you choose that? From people who work within the Pittsburgh schools. A lot of it is coming from not knowing anything, so it's just really something I want to make sure that we keep in mind going forward. I did at one point have a teacher say to me that we needed to, when I brought up challenging my kid and making sure, she said, well, we need to make sure all the children are supported. And I was like, but the smart ones are part of all of the children. So I think we actually do pretty good with the kids who are struggling. I see articles about it. That's where the state wants to put their money. But I think it's really easy to be like, oh, those kids are fine, and hand them a tablet or a laptop and just let them go. Having been one of those students myself, I know that also leads to getting into college and struggling there, so I think it's important to keep them challenged.
You know, if it's any consolation to you, what I've experienced is if you're an engaged parent, and you certainly seem to be, your child is going to be fine. It's a little concerning that a staff person would tell you that you probably want to look elsewhere. I would take that with, you know, with just a grain of salt. You know what I mean?
I would take it.
We do very well in this school system, and, do we have our challenges? Certainly. But I think we go well beyond a lot of districts that have the challenges we have, because we have great staff. Great staff administratively, but certainly in the classroom as well. So, again, people would say to me, I don't know where to send my kid for high school, when I had my kids in high school. I said, look, if you're involved, you're going to be fine, and your child's going to be fine.
I don't know that our high school at this point is that much of a concern.
No.
I would definitely say it is the middle school level.
It's that middle school experience.
I hear, I was, I'm a Lunenburg kid, but I lived across the street from the principal of Pittsburgh High School at that time, and he sent his kid to Pittsburgh instead of Lunenburg, so.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Do you, do you feel like you're getting the communication that you want about middle school? Did you say you have a fourth, you have a...
I have a fourth grader.
Fourth grader, so you're getting ready for middle school. This is why you're concerned.
I am. I'm a little bit preemptive.
Well, yeah, well, that's good.
The timing of this might be a little bit coincidental.
That's why you're engaged. That's good.
I'm glad you're here, and I, we really need to hear from people, right? So, just, what, have you had any kind of communication about what comes next, or?
Not at this point, but it's October.
Right.
It's not April yet. I would say the largest amount has been parents talking about what happened over the summer, which is not really, I mean, with a superintendent, it seemed like he was kind of unengaged this summer, from a parent perspective.
And are you talking about transportation issue? Like, when you say this summer...
I'm talking about the school assignments overall.
Oh, school assignment, yeah.
It almost seemed like there, a lot of parental feedback was that parents weren't being heard, and it's one thing to say you don't have a choice, but it's another thing to tell somebody in the middle of August, this is where you're going, and you're out of options, so too bad. And I think that's where a lot of my anxiety is coming from on this matter.
Yeah, I knew, I had a few cases where people called me, but it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't significant enough to think that there was a widespread problem there. Is that, was there, you knew of more people than that, obviously?
I've talked to very few parents who've been happy with it.
Yeah. They just, they just don't like where the kid's going, where the child's going, yeah.
Or they live near a school, and they were sent to a different school, which didn't make any sense, so.
Yeah.
Whether it's true or whether it's not, there's a lot of talk among the parents that the kids are being spread out to, even out the schools and not for any other reason.
Well, perhaps we need to do a better job at communicating.
Just to put them back into neighborhood schools?
They're back into neighborhood schools, their closest school.
But not all parents were put into their closest school.
That's where they should have called and gotten more...
I talked to a parent who appealed, who lived about a quarter of a mile from McKay, and they were put into Longs Joe, so.
It's probably the same parent I talked to.
Well, McKay, McKay is a little different. McKay is actually, it's a city school, but it's also, we have a contract with the college, and they can only take so many students. I forget the, what the number is. I don't know if you know, John, but...
No, you don't, but I think that possibly could have been a cap issue.
It's, there is a cap.
And this isn't really the purpose of this meeting, I think.
No, but it, but this is for gathering information for us all.
I think communication from the school district would be the big thing. That would be my biggest concern.
That's what we need to do, a better job at, obviously, is communicating.
That's what I love about Crocker, is the communication.
Yeah.
And can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I just want to piggyback off the mayor. I have three children in middle school who come to Memorial, and an eighth grader and two fifth graders, and I was very concerned about my eighth grader coming when she was coming into fifth grade, because, you know, she's small, and she's very shy, and, you know. She's flourished here. She really, really has. We're engaged parents, we're, you know, we're involved with the school. The teachers are out of this world. They really are. She's in the honor society, so I understand your concern. I really, really do, but the teachers here, they're, you know, and the communication, you call, you make a phone call, you call the teachers, you email, they're right, especially, you know, with the, with the fifth graders, but every year, she's had a great year.
We are hoping to end up at Memorial, but we are .74 miles from Memorial and Longs Joe, so I can't even guess.
But, you know, I can only speak for Memorial, but, I mean, we did tours. The principals were phenomenal with letting us go take a tour of Long Joe and of Memorial, and you just go from there. They both run great programs. They really, really do.
Would it be helpful, when you're talking about communication, that you kind of highlights what the middle school offers for programs and like...
Yeah, I know that Memorial had an academic success center. I don't know if it's still there. I know Longs Joe is famous for its 21st Century program. They have longer school days, and they're, they have like tech-based programs. So would that help you kind of gauge to see how, how there's different types of curriculums that's nourishing what you just talked about, the opposite ends of academic gains? The programs are, you know, kind of, they're different in each school, but they include all ends of the spectrum.
Why do we have different academic systems in all the schools, and we're no longer allowing people to have a choice between them?
I don't, I don't know about that, but I know that the Longs Joe School has a grant that it gets, that it applied and they got the grant, and with that grant, they use that IT program, the tech-based program. So those grants actually are, very few schools apply and very few of them get. That, I, I don't know the accuracy of it, but that's what, that's why they get that program. They also have an academic success center, but I don't, this program is kind of different gauging on the population that the Memorial Middle School served, and that was six years ago when I toured, so I don't know what's different now in terms of the programs that they offer.
Your question is a good question, and are you going to talk...
I don't know. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, you go, because she posed another question. What happened to choice, and why are we still believing we have it?
I had a different question, but go ahead.
No, you...
No. My question was around, you talked about challenging students, meeting students' needs. Is there any specific programming you would like the new superintendent to know about, keep in mind?
I'm not, I'm not in the education field, so.
Okay, all right.
No.
Because the elementary level have the EHA program.
They do. It is every other week, and, I mean, I know they tend to hand them like a laptop to play games on if they're...
Okay.
Can we, can someone address her question, though? What happened, her question was, what happened to choice? If, in fact, we have these specialized schools, why aren't we able to choose any longer? Is that, is that a piece of that framing of that question?
That's a piece of it as well. I mean, she brought it up. I didn't know that we still had specialized schools, but...
We, I don't think we do anymore. And I was principal when we did, we had what they call controlled choice, and we were under a desegregation order to try and racially balance the schools, and that's why we went to a controlled choice to help to try and balance the schools. That's no longer true. And when I was principal of Ryangold, we were doing world culture was our theme, and over the years, that kind of went away, and people were just going to their neighborhood school for the most part, but that, that's what happened.
Would it make sense to, Rick, Bob, to put this on the agenda for school committee to go over again the process? Apparently, there's, there's some confusion about it, so why don't we do that? And again, I don't know if it's kind of productive, we're already in the school year, but in terms of being helpful and informational, maybe it's something we should, obviously we should. It's confusing, and frankly, I don't think we have the answers for you, and that's not good.
Can I muddy the water a little more? This is from the perspective of, you know, someone who's an educator and understands teacher education. The state has decided to take middle school education and combine it with secondary education. So no longer are we even able to focus on the needs of middle schoolers. So it won't impact probably your child who's going into middle school soon, but it may impact your younger child at some point, and, and it's really, it's a concern of ours. That time and development of young people is so different, and, and I'm not sure what it's going to look like, but that's what we're trying to do now. We're trying to combine these two. Imagine that, Jean. She knows. And I don't know what they're thinking, but we can at least deal with the fact that, you know, there's some information that needs to be clarified for parents.
Right. Maybe we'll do that.
There's one thing, Doug, they, that McKay is a pre-K to 8 school.
It is.
And there's a feasibility study taking place with the Crocker Building Committee, and we don't know what's going to happen yet, because that study has not been completed. And Crocker could become a pre-K to 8 school, or it could be a pre-K to 4. And that was when, the mayor, when we went to Boston, and they asked us, you know, what is your philosophy? You know, what are you going to do? What's your system going to be? And we really haven't come up with an answer to that yet.
So we appreciate your honesty and your concerns, and stick with Pittsburgh Public Schools, because there still are a lot of great things happening, and there are a lot of good teachers that will support your child, because they'll get to know your child personally, and they will be invested in your child, and I, and I believe that. I know it. I see it all the time.
Well said. Thank you.
Can you also give us your email ID, so once we come up with an answer, we could...
Oh, that would be nice, too.
Give that to Mrs. Zina.
All right, as that's happening, I would just like to comment on just another piece behind a lot of those comments, that, and this is something that I've felt with my children coming through the system. There are, obviously, you can't make everything uniform. You know, you're going to have different teachers and different buildings and different principals, and, but the more that we can create that wealth of experience, the same kind of great experience that might be afforded somebody in some program at Long Joe, there's an equally good program at Memorial for that. And I feel like that would be something that a new superintendent should be charged to do, that there should be a, you know, a, not uniform, but there should be a commensurate experience for people in the district, and it shouldn't be that you feel like, oh, man, I didn't get in there, right? Like, it shouldn't be like that.
Yeah.
So I, that would be a big objective, I would think.
Good. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Nobody wants to take that hot seat.
I'm always in the hot seat. I just want to, I know the mayor touched on this briefly, but I, as a member of the school committee, and the school committee will make the final decision when the finalists are presented to us, and I really do want to thank all of the individuals, whether they be parents, teachers, administrators, community person at Pittsburgh State, agreeing to serve on the screening committee, screening committee, because as, as the mayor mentioned, it will be a time-consuming process, and we're working on a timeline that's very compressed. And so there'll be, I appreciate you all making the commitment to, to review all the applications that are here that will allow us to have two, three, four finalists come before the school committee to answer questions and to make a presentation, so that hopefully that we will, we will be able to make an offer to somebody in December, early January, so that that person will be in place and ready to go on July 1st, when the new fiscal year begins for the city. So I appreciate all of you for committing to this very important process, so thank you very much.
Anyone wishing to speak? Should we hand out note cards? Would you want to write it down if you're kind of nervous about coming up? Make a comment and hand it in, and we can address it?
Wallflower, Ms. Green.
You know, we won't look. We'll all turn our backs. I like this.
No plug for the arts there, Mr.?
We came to listen.
You have to, you have to, you have to send your comments.
I will take a, I will take a hot seat.
I'm, I'm not afraid. I'm not afraid. It's fine. My name is Tabitha Greenlee, so I live at 7 Park Street in Gardner, but I teach at Pittsburgh High School, and I've been there for the last eight years. And thanks to the advocacy of Superintendent Ravenel, a lot of the things that have happened within the music department at the high school have been made possible. The first, most important thing would probably be the bringing back of the High School Musical, which hadn't existed for like 20 years before we did our first one seven years ago. I didn't do one my first year. I'm sorry.
You were smart.
And in terms of commensurate education and having access to the arts at every single school within the district is something that Andre was a great supporter of, and I think it's essential for the kinds, for the students that we teach every single day, that they have access to a wealth of programming, and that they should be, we should be educating the whole child. And music is often a place where students who struggle in other academic areas find successes. Same thing in the visual and other performing arts, like theater, or painting, graphics, poetry. All of these things are essential to every single student, and for us to not have a superintendent who would be as supportive, if not more supportive, of these sorts of things within our district, I think would be a great loss to the city, especially given all of the great innovation and investments that the city is making into an arts community with Pittsburgh State and the development of the, redevelopment of the theater block in downtown, all of our collaborative efforts with the Pittsburgh Art Museum. All of these things would be a great detriment for us to just kind of throw away or close ourselves off to by not having a superintendent who will really have that same shared vision of moving Pittsburgh into a thriving arts environment. It could be, man, it could be, so.
Good.
That's it.
No, you're, you're right. I'm glad you brought that up, because that's, that's a substantial piece of the academic, you know, makeup of our schools. I think the music program, you've done an outstanding job.
Thanks.
You have been for...
Thank you.
...a number of years, and I, we, do we still have a challenge with the feeder program? People, young people coming in from the middle schools or elementary schools and going into your program at the high school?
Well, we've had, we've had great kind of expansions in the last two years, I would say, after I met with the subcommittee to discuss some of the things that we were having systemically, that we're getting in our way, that a band has started for 4th grade at South Street. The band at Crocker Elementary continues. Last year, McKay partnered with Indian Hill and was able to establish a 5th grade band, and now in their second year, they have 5th and 6th grade band. So that's great in terms of creating equity amongst the schools at the middle school level, because before, there was no instrumental program at McKay, and Memorial and Long Joe have one teacher that splits their time between the two. But Long Joe, I know, just hired a drama teacher, I think, this year, which they didn't have before, and I think that's fabulous, and the same thing for Memorial, having a separate general music teacher as well as a instrumentalist, instrumental instructor is great, to be able to have both, you know, a choral ensemble and structured time within the school day that has allowed them to have ensemble time, both for instrumental and choral activities within the school. choral activities within the school day. That's great at Memorial. I'm not so sure about the, if there's been any scheduling updates at Long Joe, but Memorial, I mean McKay, because the program is brand new and they're partnering with Indian Hill, they have a great kind of structure and setup. So I'm expecting fabulous things in the next couple of years.
Great.
I think, questions? Yeah. Was just the scheduling support at the high school, too?
I think that, like whoever does take this position really does need to see the structural facets of an arts program. That if, you know, different models could make it hard for electives. And if you're a kid who, I mean, I don't even like using the word electives or specials because if you're a kid who's going to go into that field, that's, that's your...
Of course.
Yeah. And if you, if we can't create a structural system that allows for that, where the schedule is flexible enough to incorporate that on a regular basis, then I think we're going to, you know, that's not going to be good for that.
You would know that, being a teacher. That scheduling is a challenge.
I would know that from being a parent. My child would not have been able, who loves music and thinks about majoring in music, would not have been able to take music had she gone to the Honors Academy in their block schedule system. Because they could only take four. And you have to, on that Honors Academy, you load up academics and there's no room for elective. So I think that, that's just an integral part of understanding, like how this system works, that you've really got to work with these administrators to make sure the schedules work.
Yeah, I sat for three years on the data and restructuring committee at the high school when we were in that block schedule, and it was very, very difficult. You can see from a historical perspective, in the mid-'90s, you know, the band, that any time that a period was dropped during the school day at the high school, the band would lose 10, 15 kids. And so if you start at 50, in one year, you go from a seven-period day to a six-period day and you lose 15 kids, right? Automatically, your numbers are going to diminish because you have, you're not giving them the opportunity to take all the classes that they would like to. And just denying it within the schedule as it had existed. So there was a difficulty in my first three years being in that block, block schedule. And now with our seven-drop-one schedule, which we went to seven-drop-two and now seven-one, those seven periods a day allow for greater flexibility and opportunities for students to be engaged in more of the, the things that are offered at the high school. You know, they can take all of the things that are there instead of being limited.
Okay. Thank you. You know, your whole program fits very nicely with the approach that the city is taking in being an arts community.
Mm-hmm.
And a creative, and we're embracing the creative economy. And that's what your kids do. They create, you know?
It's true.
Music, and that's right. And they're just part of that. And it would fit, it fits very nicely. And we need to nurture that. So, thank you.
So, before you go, Wanda was wonderful. Do you have any sense of a question coming up?
This is a perpetual question for me.
Oh, you don't know yet?
Even if I did know, I wouldn't tell you. I'm sorry. That's the, that's the bog standard answer. Or I can tell you what I tell all of my students, which is that we're doing cats. Every year, it's cats. It's the standard answer.
So there's a, is there a part for Mr. Waffles?
Is it, yeah, right. I know, he's not the...
I got it, he's great.
The honorary mascot for the committee. So, yes, since we are doing cats, Mr. Waffles, absolutely.
Got to be, you got to be top on your list.
Absolutely. He's an essential member of the cast.
Right.
This being my first year on the school committee, you had the preview of one of the songs from Willie Walker, and you have, it was high school and middle school and I think elementary school.
Yeah, primarily, yeah.
Do you try to do that every year to include the lower grades?
No.
No, okay.
Because it's my philosophy that the high school should be doing performances for the high school students and that their opportunity to perform in a musical is at the high school level. Now occasionally, I've done shows. It's turned out that every three years, I've done one that I've, I've asked for help from my elementary school colleagues and who have been very kind to send me delightful munchkins and this last show to do Oompa Loompas. And the reason that I had multiple grade levels is because I invited every former munchkin to come back and be an Oompa Loompa. So I had grades four through 12 present in the show. But it's not my intention every year to do a district-wide musical, but every now and then, we will need additional casts and characters.
And the superintendent appeared also.
Yes.
Does the superintendent have to do that? I mean, we have to tell, we have to be ready.
I have to say that when I asked Andre to come and perform in The Drowsy Chaperone, the show that we did two years ago, I told him that all he needed to do was come in dirty clothes that made it, made it look like he had been working out all day and that he'd be, make a great super for a building complex. And he came in full costume, like he had a beard and mustache and glasses. And I almost did, I did not recognize him when I saw him walk through the door. And that kind of, kind of commitment to the part, I think speaks for his commitment to music and the arts in our district.
Yeah.
As an anecdote.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we, yes?
I have emailed a couple of parents, telling them that the open house, open house...
Saying the open thing was today. I have an email from a parent. Should I read it or forward it to the committee? What would you like me to do?
What's...
Repeat that, Sheila.
The parent can't come here today, so she sent me an email with some things that she would like. Would you like me to read it?
Want to read, can you read it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the parent is Mildred Owino. She has one daughter in Long Joe and the other one is in Honors Academy at the high school. She's saying, hi, Sheila. The superintendent should be someone with empathy, compassion, and visionary for the student population served by the Fitchburg Public Schools. It would be ideal if the person is familiar or has worked with diverse demographics in the Fitchburg Public Schools. The candidate should be able to put the interests of the children underserved by society's standards and understand the impact of the social and economic factors surrounding educating these students. He should have, he or she should have the capability to explore alternative sources or resources to the Fitchburg Public Schools, like grants, to bridge the gap. He should have the capability to collaborate with his staff that works at Fitchburg Public Schools and provide them with the tools and resources they need to succeed. They should also have the capability to provide necessary evidence-based training to the teachers to enhance and meet the demands of the 21st century educators. The list is endless. They should also be able to improve on the high school attendance rates, which in turn improves test scores and the image of the Fitchburg Public Schools. Encourage and promote innovative ideas for high school students who may have been marginalized all along and promote their well-being. Promote social-emotional learning for all students, given the current climate of violence. Provide opportunities for students with special needs by connecting them to real-world experiences, meeting former students with special education who have succeeded or are on the path to succeed. Promote inclusion and exposure for students with special needs. She says, I could go on and on, but I believe these may be the same for other parents as well. And please let me know. And she said, if there's anything else we can help with. And she also said she forgot to mention to hire a diverse pool of teachers because our kids need role models.
Thank her.
Tell her the name again, too.
Mildred, Mildred Owino. O-W-I-N-O. And I can forward it to you guys, her email, so you can have it for record, yeah.
I think she's laid out a really important agenda and she's mindful of some of the things that I'm sure we will address in questions that are created for this candidate, right? As we interview them? So tell her, thank you so much for putting together this extensive list of areas that we will, we will address, right? We will, right?
Yes.
We're also on point. You know, so, yeah. So, thank her for that.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a comment. I've been listening and I have to, and I'm really impressed and gladdened. It's just so great to be with all these adults that care and so articulate about what they care about. And I have been thinking as we go along about the relationship with teachers. I think it was touched upon with somebody somewhere tonight. But it would be encouraging, and I haven't been in the school, the school systems, the arts teachers and the music teachers to be well-regarded and esteemed rather than always being fretful that, well, if anything's cut, we're going to go. And that's been a big issue in some places. So I was very happy to hear the presentation of the necessity for complete education of the child to include the arts. And I just want to say that I think the relationship with the teachers, I would like to see that continue to be honed in on and improved and easy-flowing. Like, I think everybody that spoke here tonight was a little bit apprehensive why, because we're used to this being maybe adversarial or I don't know what. But it was quite homey and nice and safe and comfortable and appreciated. And I think with, if, with that attitude, we could really make human strides. It would be excellent. And there was this one, you did mention the, that we've gone to distributing the children according to their neighborhoods. And that harkens in my mind, memories of, of course, always having attended neighborhood schools and the, and the warmth or the humanness that that used to include. Now, I realize things come in now, we used to always walk to school and have nice recesses and nice, go home for lunch and all of that. That evokes, when you say neighborhood school, those memories are evoked in me. I'm not sure that that same situation would prevail today. And so I would like to bring, bring to the surface the particular, the good aspects of neighborhood schools that we're, that we're going into now, to develop that thinking.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One last comment I just wanted to make was, should we leave like an open discussion for parents because they're so busy that they could send the committee emails with the points that they're looking for for the superintendent? It could be ongoing to get the feedback when we're meeting and talking.
I mean, that was my thought, it's like, just, tonight wasn't the only night. If you have other comments, if, I'm sure each of you know multiple parents who might be more comfortable addressing, talking to you directly to say, I couldn't make it or I didn't want to be on FATV, but here's what I would like to see. So I would say encourage people to contact all of you to, if they have input and suggestions.
I think it's important that we have one focal person, and I think that should be the HR director, Mr. Zina. So if we...
We can do that, then I can share...
Give out your email.
I can report out at the initial screening committee orientation meeting next week.
Okay.
Share those thoughts and ideas that...
Then we, we don't have them going to, I'll get them, sometimes somebody else will, they're all going to one, one central point. Okay.
And how do we communicate that to everybody, that Rick would be there?
Well, we've got FATV. I was going to suggest your email.
I'll send out another blast email to all parents and all staff, inviting them to send any comments electronically to my attention. I'll fire it next Tuesday when the screening committee gets...
Excellent. That's wonderful. And perhaps that could be on FATV, too, as a community poster?
Yeah, we could.
Keep them updated.
You know, that's available as well.
I can just say, like, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I can just say, like, at the state level, you know, and through research that they talk about with communication, like, just the difficulty of real communication, a two-way communication with families. I mean, I think that's an issue this district really has to try to solve. I guess I'm wondering about effectiveness. I mean, I'm an email person. I would prefer to get information through email. I know we have a Facebook page, so some people are social media people. But how do we even know our messages are getting out there? And what are we doing as a district to really question whether our messages are getting out there? You know, as a parent, and I know some of the other parents here probably have had this experience, you show up to things and a lot of times, you feel like you're seeing the same people, whether it's PTOs or, I mean, I'd love to know who's having a lot of success at really reaching parents and family members. I would, I don't know if it's anything that we can investigate just as a body ourselves because I think everybody's got an opinion about the schools that their kids go to and what they want to see in charge, you know, who they want to see in charge of that system, but...
It's a great question for the search committee, right?
Yeah.
Ask that new person coming in, how would you approach this?
Yeah.
Best principals, how do you engage with families or parents to bring them into the buildings to get more involved?
Do we even know people have gotten their emails? That's the other thing I'm kind of curious about. Like, how would we know that? Do we know that?
I think, Jean, if you go back to some of the things Andre did this past year with some of the surveys he sent out, we get significant numbers of the surveys back. Paula, do you remember some of the numbers or, on the, some of the surveys in the last year or so?
No, but we, we're notified, I mean, just like an email, it goes out and bounces back.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know when we, when we distribute the Title I parent information surveys, we do it with paper, at events, and we get between a 25% and 45% return rate from every school, including high school. Well above the 17%. That gives you a statistically reliable, but it's because there's person-to-person contact.
Yeah. Right.
I mean, we get 500 families at the Title I events because it's person-to-person. So I think electronic is great, but there's really no substitute for something more...
That's, that's encouraging.
Yeah. The personal touches in principals, you know, eyeball to eyeball.
Yeah.
And that, that's hard when you're trying to solicit a broader stakeholder interaction such as an event like tonight. That's tough.
Remember the superintendent, Ravenel, when he did coffee with parents over at Reingold's? They had, you know, and there was a pretty good turnout. It wasn't that bad, you know? And we did it in the library. And some parents had shown up and it was during the day. So maybe just a smaller venue where a parent might feel, you know, more comfortable at their child's school than an environment like this.
A little more personal when it's connected to the school, somebody they know, opportunities to speak in a, more, I mean, it's a safer environment, not on Tally.
Yeah.
Parent, I have, both of my kids' teachers this year are using apps, but I don't know if it was suggested by the school or they did it on their own. I find it great because email, not that many people use email anymore. I'm in email marketing, so. But you can message the teacher without feeling like you're bothering them because they don't have to check it. They can message you back. One thing that kind of bothers me is that it's two different apps. For the school, there's got to be something out there that the school superintendent could do on a district basis so the teachers could set up individual ones, but would also allow the district to set up messages to the parents and allow families to stay connected that
Another question, right? For the search committee.
I have a question, but I'm just going to comment. Are there comments about the...
All the comments about the superintendent we already have now, they are actually good. I have someone who's actually not good, so I'm a little shy to say it. But, you know, we used to work, I used to work, and United was a feature, and we used to have a group of kids, of the high schoolers, actually, future high schoolers, they are trying to work in some kind of history program, trying to, you know, United is a feature as more immigrants, mostly people, they go, immigrants, you know, people of color there. And they try to work in a program, in a project about immigrant history, because they say the immigrant history and the district, because they teach in school, actually, it's four years ago, about talking about, I don't know, the people from Finland, and actually, the immigrants, actually, they are in the, in feature right now, actually, it's not just that people, the people, as it's already integrated, it's 100% integrated to the community. So they tried to get a meeting with the superintendent for approximately two years, and they never get it. They never get the meeting with the superintendent, and actually, for some kind of, they refused, or they never answered emails, or those kind of things. So I think in a very diverse community like we live, actually, this community right now is not really the diverse actually the city is. But we need a superintendent, actually, who can have, is aware, this is, I don't know, probably Mr. Thompson, or someone else can tell me how many kids, I'm talking Hispanic, because I'm Hispanic, how many Hispanic people we have in the district, you know? And know, someone aware that we have this kind of diversity here, in this district.
Another good question for the search committee.
Yes.
For that superintendent. How are you going to deal with?
Deliverance.
Are we going to address?
And also, you know, what about the communication, they say, we say, you know, I apparently, you know, the two kids, I say only the panel of future students here, but I have another child in, actually, on the Mr. Thompson's school. And with two different kinds of...
Going to the high school and?
South Street. In South Street. Yeah, so it's two different kinds of parents I have, because my daughter in high school, actually, higher honor student, never give me a problem for all, and she never give me a problem. And fuck with my little one.
Remember, they might be watching.
My little one. Well, she had HED, and, you know, struggling with all the kinds of, and, you know, I never get involved, actually, in the school system, because my older never give me a problem, so I never actually, and you need to be there, and when my little one comes, and I want to be more involved, because she just, she needs, we're trying to find special education for her, and all those kind of things. And I have to tutor him here with another teacher for another district, actually, it's another district, because it's the only available. And she tell me, the only way you're going to get the help he need, he need to fail in the school. And I don't want she to fail, is why I put it here and tutoring. So, see, he shows some progress, she don't get the problem, she don't get the help. So I need, I don't want to have to help. This break my heart.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I don't know, it's just the policies of the state, of the city, but I think the principal, the principal, sorry, the superintendent should be review those kind of policies.
Yeah.
Because no one wants your, our kid fail. But you see a tend, I believe, you know, because I track him, I do for my daughter, but I track his grades, and I saw attendance to go down, and down, and down, and down, even send tutoring here. So I don't think that she need to reach the point of just fail to get the help. So, I don't know, I think this kind of policies need to review for all the kids, because I saw, when I actually started aware about those things, about those kind of problems, and so, hey, my daughter is not alone. It's hundreds of kids in the city, actually, they are on the desk, and they need this kind of help. And, I don't know, this is just a comment.
Thank you. That's a very good point. It's a very good point.
I would say, Hugo is your name?
Hugo, yes.
Hugo. I would say that, you know, someone who is about to apply for a superintendency really should understand data, and how to use data to impact instruction, and be culturally competent, right? And competency has a lot to do with how aware are you of the population you, you know, are leading? And so that piece, that cultural competence, and also this idea of using data, I mean, we will look for those things, absolutely. Someone who is, you know, able to impact policy and instructional practices, or to assist their professionals in the field to do that, using data.
Yeah.
So, and that type of data, if children are really failing before they get services, ooh. You know, I feel the same way. We don't want that to happen.
Yeah.
We want to meet them where they're at, and then move them to a place where they can succeed. And achieve, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I think this wraps it up. Initial screening committee meeting will be Tuesday, October 23rd, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That is...
At Central Office.
That's at Central Office.
Conference Room 3.
Does everyone know where Central Office is?
Mm-hmm.
On South Street, right? Okay.
I have some questions about, so, in terms of what's actually happening at initial screening, so generally, in, I know these are not the interview pieces, so I guess I'd just like a description of what happens there, but I know in interviewing, you ask the same questions to people, right?
Same questions.
And you have uniform about that, and people generally have questions that they're probably more, most interested in asking. So I'm kind of curious when we're going to try to put those questions together, and then what is the screening aspect of it?
I expect to have questions from...
I think that's...
I think that's what the next meeting is. Is that what the next meeting is?
I would anticipate that the first meeting, the orientation meeting, we will kind of review the focus and scope of the committee, go through some orientation, open meeting laws, and then start having discussions about, you know, the attributes that are most important, and start developing the questions that will be asked. And then for the second meeting, the screening committee will be in a position to kind of finalize the interview questions and protocol, and then begin the screening of the candidates in order to determine who makes the cut to come in to interview with the screening committee the third weekend in November.
I think Lynn Kucha said they had, like, a thousand questions from MASC that go through and tailor to our, to our needs.
So we don't have to recreate the wheel or reinvent the wheel?
No, no. Yeah. So we will pick out, we'll probably do, each do two questions each. We'll do the same two questions to each candidate that we interview, and we'll also have a chance to do follow-up questions to, that we've asked, and so forth.
I have one quick question, Rick. So the public interviews are the finalists by the school committee on December 3rd. Is the screening committee supposed to be there for that interview that was public?
They would, they don't need to be. At that point, it will be strictly in the hands of the school committee to make the final determination, but I think it would be, after investing all this time and effort, I would hope that one of the screening committee members would be able to attend that meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, let me, in closing, let me, and I probably, I should have done this at the beginning of the meeting, but I really want to express my thanks to all of the folks that are here tonight on the screening committee, to give of your time for this very, very important process. So, thank you all. I mean, school department people have to be here. It's really the folks that are in the community and have children in the system, and that's why it's exceedingly important that they're involved as well. So, thank you all.
Just how important it is, going back, is Dr. Fallon was here for 17 years.
Yep.
And then Mr. Lamy, who had been here for three years, but he had been the assistant superintendent.
Right.
And then Andre, 13 years.
Yeah.
You know, so that's...
Done pretty well.
You know?
Yep.
So I think screening committees have done a pretty good job, and we've got somebody that stuck with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.